Now, the pledge of allegiance. All right, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Well, still sounds like we're doing it in rounds. Hey, uh, hey, Randy, before we get started, uh, you there for me, buddy?
Yes, sir.
Would you be so kind as to send the, uh, the Zoom, oh, uh, instructions over to my, my, um, business email address? I've, I've sent it a couple of times and it's not coming over.
Okay.
Is that something you or April could do?
I sure will.
All right, thank you so much. We'll go ahead and, uh, we'll get started.
Hey, Greg, you're muted.
Okay, I don't know, how about now?
You're good.
All right, good. All right, so far, uh, and Aaron, check me on this, I think we've got one item to add. And that is, uh, the, uh, the addition of the on-call professional services for chemis- chemical booster pumps. And we would add that as item eight A. Eight A. I know we've got a closed session. Aaron, is there anything else that you needed me to add?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, so with that, I, uh, with that agenda item, do we have any others to add or any deletions? Or if we don't, then do we have a motion to approve?
You're muted again, Commissioner Eds.
Craig, do you have control of my mute button?
No.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna, uh, I'm gonna weed it out and I, I figured I'd start with you.
Suspect.
The usual suspect. All right, uh, so I don't know how that's happened, but, uh, all in favor of, uh, well, we've got a motion in a second, Craig, uh, motion, Judy second, all in favor, say aye.
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 The consent agenda's been provided for us, items A through G. You know what, uh? Let me back up here, I, I want to pull off, uh, that item just to explain because I know every time this comes up, we get a little bit of conversation about it. But the RFQ for services for broadband, let's add, let's add that as, uh, item eight B. So the public knows what we're doing there. So let's pull that up and we'll just give that pretty sense of, uh, of, of conversation, but we'll pull that off, make that item eight B. So with those, uh, uh, so, so will someone make a motion to a gen- to, to, uh?
amend the agenda?
Yeah. All right, with, good, no, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sorry about that. All right, we'll move on then, consent agenda, uh, motion to approve the consent agenda, please. All right. Jim, Judy, mo- motion in a second, and all in favor, say aye. Uh, anyone for a public comment, April?
Yes, sir, we have one person for public comment.
Oh, excellent.
Did we approve the minutes?
Uh, no, we did not, thanks for reminding me. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
All right, uh, Craig and Judy, motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, so, uh, April, we have, um, someone for public comment, so you put them through and give your name and, um, and then you have three minutes, so thank you.
Good afternoon, uh, good evening, rather. My name's Alvin Merritt and I live off of West Ridge Road, which is right by Woodleaf and, um, Inon. And I was at a meeting about a couple of months ago. Cause I got a phone call that, well, the sheriff got a phone call that I was getting my power chair. And, uh, we swapped numbers and he was supposed to get back with me, never did, and I've called and still haven't gotten back with me. So I'm wondering.
I remember, did, didn't you have a dead battery in your chair or something?
Time, yeah, time, my motorcycle was dead, yep.
Okay.
So I'm wondering, is there anything that can be done legally, is like? Some kind of law, if, if this is in your realm?
Well, um.
I mean, cause I don't see you guys building a sidewalk for me to get off the roads. And my thing is if I can get down to the week with housing development, I can cut through there and come up on Stateville and have sidewalks, or just take either all the way down to Stateville and get sidewalks there. So.
You're, you're on Woodley, you're on Woodleaf Road?
Actually, I'm on West Ridge.
West Ridge.
Where, where Inon Church is.
Yeah, yeah, yes, sir, I sure do.
You'll be coming, you'll be coming up Woodleaf Road, Greg, yes.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, you, well, what I was gonna say, normally, we don't have conversations during public comment, but these are strange times. We just want to know how, how we can help you. You had a, you had a a wheelchair, and I think that was the issue with the traffic, but, but then you said you had a, a dead battery or something in your scooter? Were, were you able to rectify that?
Yes.
Okay, so what, what is your issue now? Are you able to use your, your two-wheeled scooter?
Yes, but I'm, I'm always getting harassed by the sheriff about riding in the street.
Well, you don't have to have licenses for those, do you?
No, no, sir, I'm just a regular power chair.
Yeah, let's, um, um, A- April or, um, or Randy, is there a way you can get a number for him offline and then we can figure out what the issue is and help him? Cause I, I don't know all this publicly. But, uh, we'll, we'll make sure, sir, sure, sir, what, your name is Alvin, right?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, we'll, we'll make sure to, to contact you tomorrow, um. So, uh, April and, and Randy, is that some, okay. So, um, Mr. Everett, A- April has sent you a, a message of asking how we can reach you, so if you'll respond to her and we'll get, we'll get with you tomorrow, okay?
Um, uh, receive a message?
Well, are you on, uh, are you on phone, are you on, on a Zoom call, or did you call in with your phone?
No, I'm on a tablet.
So are you seeing?
Yes, I see you.
Okay, well, um, I tell you what, you know, if you try to figure out how to get his number from him without making it public.
Miss, Mr. Merritt, if you could just, um, respond through the chat, if you can locate the chat icon on your tablet and tap on that.
Okay, there you go again, I got it now.
All right, Mr. Everett, if you'll leave your phone number with April, then we'll, we'll, uh, we give you our word, we'll give you a call tomorrow, okay? Is that okay?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
All right, all right, well, uh, thank, thanks for zooming in, God bless you, okay?
All right, you guys have a good meeting.
You, you, well, thank you so much. All right, April, is there anyone else?
I do not see anyone else, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, then we'll move on to item number three, public hearing, uh, for urbanized area formula grants. Uh, from Valerie, um, Director of Airport and Transit, Valerie Steele, thank you.
Chairman, this is Valerie.
Valerie, we can hear you just a little bit, but you're broken up a bit.
Okay, since you wouldn't let me call in, so I have to use the laptop audio. And there should be a PowerPoint.
Valerie, have you emailed either April or us off that PowerPoint, or were you intending to present?
It was sent over through the business agenda into Karen.
Okay, I will pull that real quickly.
If they don't need it, it goes through the PowerPoint, it's very self-explanatory, um, I just don't have all the numbers memorized, the reason for the request to be updated to a larger number is because we're moving in-house, originally, we were still under contract. Because we're moving in-house, that means we have operational expenses we can pay for through the grant that we could not pay for before. And those amounts come in at an eighty-twenty match, so eighty percent of things in the only half the match of twenty. So the amount requested is for the for us to be able to take advantage of the full amount from the government side, which is three hundred thousand. That's a slideshow breakdown of what that amounts for eighty-twenty and fifty-fifty are. So that's what was currently approved back, I think, in March. Local match, eighty thousand, the available funds are three hundred thousand. For operating expenses, it's a fifty-fifty match, so federal will be eighty, local will be eighty. We go to the next slide. These are what I showed are the reasons, um, we're going to be responsible for maintenance, there's a new director, we're dating operations in-house. Uh, we're seeing impacts of COVID-19 with funding being eliminated or reduced. And then on the next slide, it should show the new request. Uh, they ask us for an additional hundred thousand in local match, meaning the total local match to a hundred and eighty. Federal obligation, but we can apply for reimbursement under three hundred thousand in the breakdown shown for operations fifty-fifty and preventative maintenance, which we will now be responsible for our own system, eighty-twenty, so federal's a hundred and fifty and local's only thirty.
Guys, hold on, um. All right, can y'all?
Well, there you go. No one can hear you.
All right, I'm sorry, I'm having all kind of issues here, I, I can't get an email, uh, through here in my office, so I'm on my phone and I've got a horrible signal right here in the middle of Salisbury. So I'm really sorry. Okay, so, um, so what we need to do is Valerie's finished her report, and so we need, uh, to have a, a public hearing uh, for the urbanized area formula grants. Uh, Jay, are you here with us?
I am.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm kind of playing catch-up of, of all this, so we just need to open the floor for a public hearing to ha- give the public an opportunity to speak about the grants that we're applying for, and, um, if we don't have anything, then, um, are we under the same rules where we'll, uh, vote on this subject to a twenty-four hour period?
Yes.
Okay. All right, then, uh, what we'll do is we will open the floor to a public hearing now, we've heard a presentation from the Airport and Transit Director Valerie Steele, uh, regarding the, uh, urbanized area formula grants. So is there anyone there would like to speak, uh, for or against this, have any comments?
Anyone wishing to speak during the public comment portion of this hearing can do so by using the raise your hand function within the Zoom app or pressing star nine on your phone if you're joining us by telephone.
All right, well, hearing none, we'll close, uh, the public comment period, and commissioners, do we have a motion, uh, to approve the urbanized area formula grants?
We move.
All right, Craig? And Mike is second, all right, any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Aye.
All right, item number four, uh, state of the county report, glad to have Nina Oliver with us here, so.
Uh, actually, that would be, uh, Alyssa Harris.
Okay, oh, that's right, well, I saw Nina on there, but I, I actually saw Nina's, or Alyssa's face here, so, uh, welcome.
Chairman, I, I am here, I'm, I'm here to give support to Alyssa to answer any questions the board may have.
Okay, good, well, uh, we're glad you're here too, so welcome.
Thank you.
So Alyssa? Take it away.
Okay, um, I cannot start my video, but I should be able to share my screen. Um, so I do hope you bear with me, let me know, can everyone see the screen?
Yes, ma'am.
Wonderful, well, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Rowan County staff and citizens, thank you so much for this opportunity to share these updates. Um, as we go through this, I do want to provide just a few caveats or disclaimers, uh, to move forward. Uh, the information that's shared here today is based in twenty nineteen. So as I review this data, please think back to last year, or maybe the years past, as data often lags a few years. Uh, we know that so many of these things may have changed with COVID-19, uh, but this information is still a very useful baseline and foundation for us to review. The slides will have a number of tables and charts on them, and I'm happy to send you those after the presentation and discuss any area more in depth. Um, and I'm very much looking forward to your questions and feedback, I'm happy to have you stop me during the presentation to ask questions for clarification. Um, and then finally, please think of this as both accountability to the work that we should be doing in the community and an opportunity for you all to help us find solutions. Um, too often, even today, we have an idea that one agency only affects one thing. Uh, but what you'll see from this report, and what you all already know, uh, is that all of these agencies, business, education, nonprofits, healthcare, and local government play such an important role in creating healthy environments, better jobs, and improving the quality of life of Rowan citizens. Um, so with all that, uh, let's get started. So, uh, here are some quick facts about the SACH, or the State of the County Health Report, as we call it. Um, it is mandatory for all local health departments in North Carolina every year, uh, in between the community health assessment. Um, if you'll recall, our last community health assessment, uh, which was sometimes called the Community Health and Human Service Needs Assessment, was completed in twenty eighteen and was a joint effort of Navant Health, Healthy Rowan, uh, the Rowan County United Way, and, um, the Health Department, uh, with support of UNC's School of Public Health. Um, so it's a requirement of all these agencies through various laws and bylaws, uh, and was a great opportunity for us to work together. Um, but after this, all of, uh, each agency kind of went back into their own bubble to create an action plan, which we'll see later. Uh, really what we want to see eventually is moving away from this and creating a model where we have a ro- one Rowan County action plan. Um, so at the end, I'll share sort of a structure of what, what that might look like. Um, the State of the County Health Report brings attention to areas, uh, where we can implement policy systems and environmental changes to support health. It describes local efforts that impact, uh, local health issues and allows us to identify new and emerging issues for our community. It's also a, a part of what our Health Department is legally required to do, and it's an important part of accreditation. It allows us to address essential public health services, like monitoring health status, uh, to identify those common, uh, the community health problems and allows us to mobilize community partnerships, uh, to identify or solve them. Um, and it provides an update on forces that are driving change in our community. Um, and allows me and us at the Health Department to provide information back to the community. I strongly feel that we are duty-bound to this work, uh, towards improving the lives of citizens, and we take that responsibility very seriously. Um, so hopefully, what you'll see in this report is an update to data, but also what actions that we have taken in comparison to what we told the state and what we tell you all, uh, that we're going to do here at the Health Department. So when we look at forces driving change, uh, we're talking about things like population growth, uh, poverty rates, housing affordability, uh, economic opportunities, whether that's unemployment, underemployment, um, and culture of health habits and building healthy environments. Um, so please note, when I say insufficient economic opportunities, this is not from lack of success with our, uh, Economic Development Commission and with the work that you all are doing, uh, because you are making fantastic strides in bringing jobs into Rowan County that, uh, duly increase the quality of life for citizens. Um, and when we talk about health habits and healthy environments, that's where that saying, uh, you know, making the healthy choice the easy choice, really comes into play. So as we look at our demographics, um, this is a slide that just shows where we are in comparison to the state. Uh, so Rowan County has a higher white population than the state average, but actually a, a similar Hispanic population, um, compared to the state. Uh, so just keep that in mind as we go through and, and look at what our, our breakdown is here in Rowan County. And all this information is from our US Census Bureau. When we look at population trends, uh, we are moving in the right direction, we are steadily growing, and maybe not as much as other communities, uh, but really in the right direction. Um, and we will have to share, you know, Hispanic population growth accounted for about sixty percent, um, of the county's total population growth, which, or sixty-five percent, excuse me, um, between two thousand and two thousand and ten. Uh, we contribute to about one point four percent of North Carolina's over po- or overall population. And you can see the breakdown of Rowan versus North Carolina. Uh, just an interesting fact or tidbit is, uh, Rowan County actually has the highest percentage of males and lowest percentage of females compared to state and here counties. Um, you know, there's still a little bit of a skew, but we actually are higher, um, why? Not quite sure. Um, and then, as we look into these age brackets, you'll see that our population leans heavier on that forty-plus age bracket, uh, which should be no surprise if you've heard of the Silver Tsunami, um, and the designation of Salisbury as a certified retirement community. What this should spark in you is the thought of how are we creating blue zones, and that will be a, a word that will pop up. Um, it's, a blue zone is an area where those who are aging are living the healthiest lives. Um, and so several of the things that line up are actually things that we're already working on, which is great. Um, with, when we look at life expectancy, women live longer than men here, which is true in most places. Um, so in the full report, you'll note some disparities or some differences, uh, for life expectancy based on race. Um, and typically, life expectancy is used to gauge overall health of the community and takes into a number of factors that influence health. So moving forward, we're going to be looking at a lot of different, uh, metrics that play into where our health is for Rowan County. Uh, one of these is the social determinants of health, or something we're actually moving towards calling, uh, vital conditions. Um, so these are the areas, the economic, social, and environmental conditions where people live, learn, work, and play, uh, which do affect a wide range of health outcomes. Um, so conditions like food insecurity, housing instability, unmet transportation needs, and poverty have a deep impact on our community members' health. Um, so we do know that these are vital, um, to help live a healthy life. So we know things like having a job improves, uh, overall mental health. Uh, we know that poor home environments can lead to things like chronic asthma. Um, and we know that if someone doesn't have transportation, they may not be able to make it to a doctor's appointment to manage a chronic condition. Um, so the research also shows us a connection with, uh, diseases like diabetes and these vital conditions. Uh, clinical data overlaps poverty, low education attainment, and food deserts, uh, with an increase of prevalence of both diabetes and additional preventable emergency room visits. So, this is a GIS map of the census tracts in Rowan County with the darker areas indicating a higher percentage of the population below the poverty line. And highlighted, you'll see areas of concentrated poverty, so these are where forty percent or more, uh, residents have incomes that are, um, less than a hundred and eighty-five percent of the federal poverty threshold, uh, which just means, uh, less than around, uh, fifty-two thousand for a family of four. So in a few slides, you'll see that there is a, um, a metric that's, uh, children living in poverty, or an indicator, uh, which really captures an upstream measure of poverty that assesses both current and future health risks. Uh, so, based on our most recent county health rankings, around twenty-five percent of Rowan County children are living in poverty, uh, while the statewide average is only around twenty. Um, so, you know, just keeping that in mind as we move forward with these things. Um, at the time I put these slides together, our unemployment rate actually matched that of the state, so around three point nine percent. Uh, so we're really looking at this, this disparity or this difference between, you know, having low unemployment, but also having, uh, poverty exist in our community. When we look at housing, housing is considered another vital condition, um, it often reflects the largest single monthly expenditure for individuals and families. Uh, we consider someone to be cost-burdened if they spend more than thirty percent of their income on housing. Um, so for those living in poverty, being cost-burdened, uh, decreases the likelihood of being able to pay utility bills, have a source of medical care, or becoming food insecure. Um, and so we also know that foreclosure is associated with, um, distress, alcohol use, um, and potentially suicide. So just really keeping that in mind, we want to keep housing costs affordable, um, and available for our community members. Um, we also know that our neighborhoods have a profound impact on our health. So the availability and accessibility of resources like parks and public transportation and nearby grocery stores are all correlated with improved health outcomes. I do want to point out how great Rowan Helping Ministries has been in connecting people. I do want to point out how great Rowan Helping Ministries has been in connecting people experiencing homelessness. Not only with a place to live, but with also with stability and encouragement. And the development of life skills in connection to employment. We really have to consider, you know, the mental health aspect of not having a job. And so many of these people just need that extra help in getting connected to these life skill classes and resources that are available to them. When we look at the good news, we have a large percentage, almost 70% of occupied housing units are owned. So owned housing means that our citizens are able to build wealth through investing in assets. So homeownership can come with high expenses. But it also means that someone can eventually transition their monthly mortgage payment into savings. To be used on children going to college, helping others build generational wealth. So that's that's huge for our county and for our community. When we look at food deserts, another vital condition with our community, our county health ranking, about 11% of our population. Is said to have limited access to healthy foods, whereas the state average is around 7%. And also from this report, 14% of our population is food insecure. Meaning they may go without meals because they either don't have enough or don't have money to access food. What was interesting to me when I was pulling these slides together. Is that our areas of concentrated poverty and areas of food deserts do not necessarily go hand in hand. So there's some work that needs to be done in connecting these other folks with access to food. And it could be something as simple as getting the distributors connected to the consumers. In 2019, organizations began working together and created the Rowan Food and Farm Network to educate residents and become. Better connected between farmers, distributors, vendors and consumers. We know that there is plenty of food and we also see plenty of food waste. But we do need a better way of getting what we have in the hands of those who are in need. In addition, focusing in on this supports our economy and our agribusiness. I do want to say this has actually been one of the most successful farmers markets years yet in the middle of COVID. Given the new space near Lee Street Theater. And we're actually working with the EPA on a local foods, local places grant to see how we can, how that can benefit. Not just Salisbury, but all of Rowan County with the the new farmers market. So all of this sort of rolls up into this idea of these socio socioeconomic factors that influence health. And this information all again comes from those county health rankings. And so the trends tell us over a period of time if we're growing, which unemployment and underserved are faring better. Which is amazing. And we do know that those are likely to change with COVID, but hopefully we'll be able to bounce back. Something that's interesting is this metrics or the way they count things is they only look at high school graduation rate. Which is, you know, if you are just looking at that, then. By the time they've graduated, we've already missed that opportunity to help our children. And so in the future, we're looking more at things like third grade reading proficiency. And focusing in on that to see where we can help children get better. Or improve in their graduation rates. So again, putting all these together is how we get our county health ranking. We know that the metrics are skewed somewhat and that the data is imperfect. But given that every county in the US is compared using the same data, it's at least. Applicable for us to look at it and see what it's saying about our community. So we've actually increased to 73rd, which means that our county health ranking has gotten worse. Where one is the healthiest and 100 is the least healthy. But we are working in a lot of these areas and you can see from those previous slides that health outcomes. Or healthy lifestyle behaviors like what I focus on, aren't going to be the end all be all. We need the experts in economic development and local government and our local vital conditions. To help provide that foundation for all other health. So when we look at our mortality, so our length of life and our morbidity, quality of life. You can see where we rank there 73rd and 69th. And then in comparison to the counties that surround us. We're still looking at Cabarrus, Davie, Iredell, Davidson and Stanley faring a little bit better than than what we're doing. And when I really dug into the data to see what it was that brought us from 59th back down to 73rd. Is it looked like our quality of life, so things like self-reported poor or fair health. Poor physical health days, poor mental health days and low birth weight really had us take a dive. So we went from ranking 68th to, or 28th to 69th. Another factor where we decreased was clinical care. So we moved from 48th to 64th. And it's unclear what the defining factor was there. It looks like other counties improved over us. So when we dive deeper into our leading causes of death, we see the majority of causes of death in Rowan County are related to chronic disease. So things like cancer, heart disease, stroke, kidney disease, emphysema and diabetes. And many of them are much higher than the average rate of North Carolina as a whole. And when we dig into this, we know that. Chronic diseases can be prevented by eating well, being physically active, avoiding tobacco and excessive drinking. And getting regular screenings to assess health. So really looking at those modifiable risk factors or those behaviors that we can encourage our citizens to do. In order to prevent these top 10 leading causes of death. And I did want to mention this because it is so apropos, so present in this moment, is how are we seeing this play out in real time? So we can see the effects of poor health. We know that patients are at higher risk for things like COVID. With pre-existing conditions like obesity, hypertension, cardiovascular disease, diabetes and COPD. So for our county, when you look at the data, around 78% of the population is over 18. And we know 38% of that population is already considered obese, which is around 42,000 residents or more than the size of the city of Salisbury. And so I'm not going to read this to you, but this explains why having obesity means that you're more likely to have a poor health outcome related to COVID. Same with diabetes, about 12.3% of Rowan adults have diabetes or around 13,600 residents. Again, it relates back to our immune systems, what our functional capacity for our lungs is and and different. Physiological changes that happen as a result of these diseases. And then tobacco use, again, 17% of Rowan adults smoke or around 18,800 residents. And so the other risk factors, kidney disease, COPD, hypertension or high blood pressure and heart disease. Are all playing a factor in those who get COVID if they're more likely to have a worse outcome in the long run. So as mentioned earlier, after we complete our community health assessment, we as an agency. Create an action plan from those top three identified priority areas. So in 2018, substance use, healthy lifestyle behaviors and mental health were all identified as priorities. And so what the Health Department does is we submit a plan to the state around our community health improvement objectives. So these are things that are both short and long term goals, like decreasing obesity. Decreasing those who smoke or use tobacco, increasing the safe use and disposal of medications. Increasing comprehensive care management for individuals with opioid related health concerns. And decreasing the spread of HIV and/or hepatitis C. You know, this doesn't mean that we can't focus in on other areas, but it does allow us to have a concentrated directive in order to move the needle. And through all of this, we're really proud to have this structure in Rowan County to connect the dots between different community priorities. This includes organizations or coalitions like Healthy Rowan, our Substance Use Task Force and the Youth Substance Use Prevention Program. And then our mental health programs and projects that the county has funded. So throughout the whole document for the SACH, it represents the collective impact of all the agencies working together. To produce positive outcomes for Rowan County. As we know that one agency can't do all of this alone. So as I mentioned. What I want this to be is to show you that we are accountable for those things that we sent to the state. And share with your updates to what we've accomplished over the last year. When we look at substance use, I'm not going to, you know, read this to you, but I do want to point out. We are working to address these areas of medication takeback. Of Narcan distribution and of supporting our post overdose response team. So really with that goal of reducing the number of emergency room visits, reducing the number of overdoses. And reducing the amount of medication that's available in our community. Not only will this protect citizens, but it also protects our environment. Because we don't want folks flushing medication, we want them to be disposing of it properly in our community. And I did want to highlight, we collected almost 900 additional pounds from 2018 and 2019 of medication. Which is huge. So we collected, you know, 1200, about 1200 pounds and we did about 2100 pounds this year. And so that's a joint effort with the Sheriff's Department, with our municipal police force. We're really thankful for all the work that they've done in helping us reduce the medication available in our community. And then healthy lifestyles. So we are focused in on these areas of promoting physical activity. Addressing nutrition changes across the lifespan and addressing those tobacco related areas. Of adolescents using tobacco or having those policies in place. We'll continue to report on this. Again, each year you'll get hopefully us reaching a new goal. That we've set out with the state and we'll be able to share those, that information and be able to share the distinct health outcomes that have resulted. From the investment in these sorts of programs. We don't do anything just to do it. We're not just collecting the number of physicians. We really want to see health status change for our citizens here in Rowan County. So finally, some new and emerging issues that we do need to have sort of on our periphery as we look forward in 2020 and beyond. So things like communicable diseases, those infectious diseases that are spread from person to person. Are becoming more prevalent and it's something that we really do need to be focusing on here in Rowan County. So teen pregnancy and STI STDs is something that has been noted as increasing, especially compared to neighboring counties. Currently, our health clinic does provide testing and counseling based on an individual level. But given capacity issues right now with staffing, we haven't been able to do more. This is why we've applied for over 1.35 million in funding with the Family and Youth Services Bureau. For a grant to support abstinence based education, promoting parent child connectedness and conversation. And promoting positive youth development and helping kids make healthy decisions. Another new initiative or emerging issue is the idea or addressing hepatitis C. So hepatitis C has actually seen an exponential increase in the cure rate due to new pharmaceutical and treatment options. But the medication is still extremely expensive, around $80,000 per individual. But through a partnership with the Health Department and our free clinic, we were able to begin working together to address this hepatitis C crisis in Rowan County. Our Health Department is able to provide screening and vaccines for hep A and B as a part of regularly managed care. So whereas the care clinic is able to provide or work with pharmaceutical companies to secure those treatment options at a lower rate. We've actually seen 24 patients or citizens cured, which is a huge win for them and for our community. And beyond that, it saved about $2 million in medication. Because of working through the options that the free clinic does have to get medications from those companies. And then another new and emerging issue is just the idea of health disparities. I won't say it's new, but it is something that the state is focused more and more on. In the next couple of slides, you'll see our new indicators for healthy North Carolina 2030. Which is a set of 21 metrics that we'll be tracking over the next 10 years. Within those indicators, they note not only the overall data, but they also break it down by race, ethnicity and by gender. So in many instances, we're seeing minority populations, not just in Rowan County, it's happening across North Carolina. But they are carrying a heavier burden of disease and poor health outcomes. And so part of this is due to systemic problems with previous policies and the way things were implemented. But it also could be around poverty, it could be around accessing healthcare, transportation, a number of those vital conditions that we mentioned earlier. So again, just take this slide in, consider this as we move forward and work to address those significant disparities. Like we're doing right now with COVID testing and trying to get our minority populations additional testing with funding from the state. So finally, I'm about to wrap up, but these are the health indicators. And in the State of the County Health Report, this is going to be your very last page. So these indicators are what the state is tracking overall for all of North Carolina. And so you'll go through and you'll actually see Rowan County is doing better in some of these areas than other communities. Things like our individuals below poverty level, our unemployment rate. And things like access to exercise opportunities, we're doing better. But there's definitely still some room to grow and we're excited to work with the different agencies because they are the experts. Folks like our business community, our nonprofits and help in our school system and helping address these things. So that we can in 10 years look back and see that we are meeting those goals that North Carolina has has set out for all of us as a state. So there are indicators in each category. Again, you can go through the report, the very last page, it's all laid out in a really nice chart. And these indicators were chosen because of how they all roll up together to produce the last two. Which are infant mortality and life expectancy. So both of these are an important, are important markers of the overall health of a community or a society. And so we look at this, this shows you how all of those things can then lead up to things like our length of life and our quality of life. So we definitely want to see Rowan citizens having a great quality of life and a very long and healthy length of their lives here. I know we all want to see that. So at last our ask of what can our county commissioners do with this information? So please just keep this in mind as you look at policy systems and environmental changes. As you are approached with different advocacy or grant opportunities with the state. As you look at the Health Department for funding and staffing. But also as you look at modeling healthy behaviors as leaders. So that's really, really important for everyone to see, you know, us all engaging in eating right and being physically active. And citizens want that and they're going to see what we do and what we consider important to do the same thing as well. And then continuing to support our evidence-based programs and initiatives for health. Something that's very important to us here at the Health Department is not doing something that hasn't been proven or tested. I think that's incredibly important as we look at adapting things to our community. We want to make sure that it's going to give us those outcomes that we want to see and that we know are issues here in Rowan County. Alright, and thank you so much for your time. I truly, truly appreciate it. I hope this report is useful now and in the future as we look at different opportunities together. And thank you for what you're doing for our community, especially now during the time of COVID.
Alright, questions for Alyssa?
Yeah, oh, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead Judy, I'll wait.
Oh, Alyssa, could you just speak to the whole issue of. Of childhood obesity and before COVID and then what we've seen since it has started?
Yes, absolutely. So childhood obesity has actually been increasing for at least the last three years. And we know this through our partnership with Salisbury Pediatrics and with Novant Health. What's really concerning is that children who are getting their health status or their wellness checks in January. Have gone back and they're seeing a 30 pound increase for some patients and.
Hello?
We lose her?
I'm not, I'm not sure what happened. Sorry about that. But I was just saying, you know, we've got children who are experiencing significant weight gain and we understand the mental health. Concerns that make them fat and we understand that we need to be doing something and we can't just, you know, send them YouTube to exercise. That there's something to be said about getting kids up and moving even right now and trying to figure out how to do that safely. So it's definitely on our radar. Uh, so it's definitely on our radar um as something that we need to address.
Yeah, that thirty pounds, that just blew me away.
Holy cow. Craig, do you have something?
Yeah, I just got a quick question, uh just a clarification. All the statistics that you're using for the county, is the V hospital figured into those statistics also?
Um, the only, uh as far as uh clinical care, as far as population or.
Well, as far as mortality rate and, and as far as, you know, the well-being of citizens. The reason I ask is, you know, you're comparing other counties to us that don't have VA facilities. And that's, you know, this is one of the largest ones in the southeast. So if we're plugging those numbers into our county statistics, I don't see how we're ever going to be able to compete with surrounding counties.
I, I think, I think what Craig's saying is they're not coming here because, to move here because they're healthy. They're coming, they're moving here because they're sick.
Correct. And that's why I'm saying these, if they're plugging those statistics into the countywide statistics, then, you know, we're not going to be uh successful at lowering these rates, especially with what's going on out there now.
Yeah, I absolutely understand. Um, so my understanding is when we do phone calls or those who are asking about, you know, poor quality of life or poor mental health days, um those are citizens who live here. So, you know, they're, they're looking through the phone book um and picking those numbers to call. And it's a statistically significant um measure or they're using a statistically significant tool in order to do that so they can apply it to the county. As far as folks who are moving here for VA care, um, you know, I'm not sure as far as how that they are built in, uh but we do have to consider that they are part of our community and we do want them to be healthy. And it's not just those folks who are experiencing um things like obesity and diabetes. Uh, so we have to take a picture of or account the whole community uh when we talk about the policies.
Well, I understand what you're saying. I'm just saying it skews the numbers when you've got people that are actually coming to this county with or what causes uh mental or even physical deficiencies. So there should be some way to kind of pull those numbers back out and let's just see of those people that are here, uh that have lived here, their lives educated here, worked here, been property owners and those kind of things to see what we have as a true picture.
That's really true, Craig. Um, the other way to look at it too is to look specifically at Rowan's year to year versus comparing it to um, you know, other counties. Because the biggest, biggest issue for us is to improve for our citizens to improve in their health outcomes each year. But that's a very good point about the skewing of the numbers with the VA being here.
Now, I'd also like to thank the commissioners for approving, this was a year and a half back, loaning the money to the TDA so that we could build what is now the farmer's market. Uh, because we felt like it was going to be an integral part of, of the health of our citizens. So again, I'd like to thank the commissioners for approving those dollars into the TDA and James Meacham for getting this project done.
Absolutely. It has been essential and just to see the growth that it's already brought Rowan County. Even in the midst of, in the midst of a pandemic, we've seen the best farmer's market year we've ever seen so far. Um, it's pretty remarkable.
Yeah, if you haven't been there, I would encourage you to go. Um, the new venue is just really attracting people and I think the, the vendors are very happy too.
I tell you, all of this, um, I, I don't want to speak for all the commissioners, but I think they would agree as we have the word has matured in our positions as commissioners and every day we're part of meetings and really see the interconnectedness of all of this, everything. I mean, it's, you've got a large report here, but it's not one percent of the issues that we're dealing with. Um, I, I'm interested to see Cabarrus County, what were they, number nine, even Davie County?
Yes, sir, yeah.
Yeah, a- and, and so as, a- as we talk about health issues, there are health issues, there's economic issues, there's age issues, you know, what? What, what are we doing to attract younger folks to Rowan County? Why would they come here? They would come here because there's opportunity. And we've, we've had these conversations a lot with the EDC and with the uh Education Collaborative that uh we're having conversations with along with Livingstone and Catawba and K-12 and Rowan Cabarrus about creating a, a pipeline of uh, of quality workers so that we can attract higher paying jobs, so that we attract uh younger people here who, and younger people are typically more healthy.
Um, right, yep.
It's, it's frustrating, uh, it's frustrating, I think, for all of us to see that we've made some progress and now to drop back down again uh to, in, into the seventies. I, I don't know about y'all, but I, that's really disappointing. You know, we've got fourteen hundred jobs coming from Chewy. Um, we, we have announcements uh quite often about job expansions. There is, there's a lot of opportunity uh right now in Rowan County for jobs. Uh, Jim Green put together uh Better Jobs for Better Lives, which is a program that we funded to take folks who are either jobless or underemployed and want better jobs, uh will pay for training to put them right away into, to new uh better paying jobs. And so we talk about access to healthcare. The best access to healthcare is through health insurance provided from an employer. Um, and so that, that's uh, you know, so the, these things, uh Chewy provided, and I, I've talked about this a lot, provided an opportunity for a, a lot of folks to get out of two and three part-time jobs with no benefits into one full-time job with full benefits um and, and be able to raise their standard of living. And so uh we, you know, in your statistics, um you, you talked about um teenage pregnancy. We're high there. I, I was in a Rowan County meeting a few years ago and the lady from the state identified Rowan County is having one of the highest single-parent household uh statistics in the region and the same with teenage pregnancy. And so that just puts a strain on those families. Uh, certainly just from the math of that, it affects our poverty issues because you only have one uh wage earner in the home. Uh, it affects our education issues because there's uh, there, there's not multiple adults in the home. Um, you know, helping with the kids. And so all of these things are just piling up. And then it's disappointing to see that we've taken this plunge again and, and commissioners, I don't know about you, but good heavens. Um, uh, you know, some s- stuff has gotten a lot better. There's no question. Our unemployment has looked great, but and how do we compress? How, how do, how do we make better or um? The, the well, so I, I'm, I'm just saying I'm kind of disappointed at this and um I don't, I don't know how we how we turn that around.
Yeah. I do want to say I have so appreciated all that you all are doing to align uh the work in different areas. Um, we have seen that and we know that because these statistics are a few years out, we may not see the benefits. Um, but we do know, and I, I am participating in things like the Rowan County Young Professional Group uh that has grown exponentially and gotten connected to the different things that are being promoted through your Rowan. Um, and actually from that, uh, the focus of that group is seeing how we can mentor college and high school students so that they come back into Rowan County. Uh, so I know there's a lot of passion. I know that um younger workers are listening to what you all are doing and thinking about how can they bring their friends here. Uh, and that's really encouraging to me. And I do apologize for being the, the bearer of somewhat bad news, but it's definitely not all bad. And I think there's a lot of growth and room for opportunity. And I'm really hoping that as we continue to tackle these issues that didn't pop up overnight, they didn't pop up in the last, you know, four years, um, that will make some eh movement in the right direction and continue to move the needle um with our goal of being above the fiftieth percentile um at minimum.
Uh, y'all have heard me say this before. Um, you know, the, the thing I, I'm most focused on, I think, is just improving our opportunities. Um, uh, let's see, in two thousand eighteen, I had the opportunity to speak at at Livingstone and at Rowan County Early College, uh at some entrepreneur, uh some different entrepreneur um classes that are held around the, the, the uh K-12 system. And that's something that I always ask, um, tell, tell me how many of you plan on staying here after you graduate at Livingstone? It was just a handful out of the full um auditorium that was there. And so that's um incumbent upon, and, and so when you're able to talk with those folks, why? They say, here's why. I went to Early College and two hundred and sixty-five kids there at Rowan Cabarrus. And I said, raise your hand if you intend on staying here after graduation. And we had no kids raise their hand. I've gone to entrepreneurship classes with thirty, thirty-five kids at a time. And the, and the kids say they, they want to get out of Rowan County after graduation. And so the, the issue is not that they don't like where they live or they don't uh think it's a cool place. The, the issue is they, they don't see that there's opportunity. And for a lot of them, there isn't. As we, as I, I pick some folks out of the crowd, someone wants to be a nuclear engineer. Well, we don't have nuclear engineering companies here that they can go to work for. Some do um, medic, someone wanted, some want to do medical research, uh some want to work up. So it's things that we know that we can attract, but, but this is why the direction and the focus of K-12 of Rowan Saul's, of, of Rowan Cabarrus Community College, Livingstone and Catawba is so critical because without that pipeline of folks, so that a company can look at Rowan County and say, I'm going to come here because we have those qualified workers to work in our high-tech uh field, then uh our, uh, our pay, our, our opportunity, I think, is going to be capped. And uh so that affects us in regard to, to the younger crowd coming here. It affects our hea- health numbers um and all that. And so, man, we just keep working toward that. And I know Rod Kreider and those guys aren't here and we don't have any folks from the education team here. But this is um, we're, we're just one nugget of this entire cog that we're trying to put together to create opportunity and to raise the level of the standard of living. I've heard Jim Green say over and over, the best answer to poverty is what, Jim?
Good job.
Good job, that's right. And so we're, we're certainly in a position to make that happen. So tha- thanks Alyssa. Thank you Nina uh for being here. And um, and anything else for these ladies?
Thank you.
Alright, thank you guys. Alright, uh, we'll move to uh manager search for item number five, uh updates on the uh coronavirus relief fund.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This is just a brief update on the coronavirus relief fund. It continues to change. So initially, uh, there was an appropriation of a hundred and fifty million for local governments. There is now a new appropriation uh of a hundred and fifty million, which brings the total appropriation to three hundred million. Initially, uh, Rowan County was awarded or appropriated two million five hundred and sixty-one thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars. Most recently, there was an additional appropriation to Rowan County for two million seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand six hundred and thirty-six dollars. So when you combine the two appropriations, uh, the total is five million three hundred and nineteen, four hundred and fifty-five dollars. Now, this has to be spent at this time by December thirtieth, two thousand twenty. And if you'll recall, the board approved a plan for the two million five hundred and sixty-one thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars. So, um, the new rule, well, there's, there's a new rule and then there's additional guidance. But the, the new rule is that twenty-five percent um must go to municipalities. So Rowan County in that case would receive three million nine hundred and eighty-nine thousand five hundred and ninety dollars. And municipalities would receive one million three hundred and twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars. So here, here is one way uh to determine the distribution uh for municipalities. And this is based on the, the population. So, so it would be a per capita distribution. And that's one thing that tonight we'd like to ask the board to approve this method of distribution. And the reason for approving it to not is because the municipalities have to have a plan turned in um by, by September the first to the county. Now, at, as it stands right now and as I understand it, the county is responsible for the funds. But the twenty-five percent that goes to the municipality, the municipalities are responsible for how they spend those funds. So a- as I understand it today, unless it changes, I don't believe that the county has to actually approve their plan. Um, because it's their plan, it's just coming to the county and then we're sending it to the state. Um, uh, that may change and my interpretation may be wrong, but that is my understanding right now. Because uh, case in point, we are mandated um to provide twenty-five percent of the total appropriation to the municipalities. So, take that a little step further. You know, the county is go- going to be uh responsible for how our portion is spent. But as I understand it, the municipalities will be responsible for their individual uh expenditures within their appropriation. However, the Board of Commissioners to determine to allocate the twenty-five percent. Randy, if you could go back up to the, to yeah, so, I mean, this is, this is one way to do it. Uh, another way that, that, that a, another county is doing it, they're, they're asking municipalities to submit requests, um, you know, like you would a budget. But I think this may be the most fair and, and easiest way to do it, especially given um the ti- the timeline. Now, okay, the next slide, Randy. So ni- next steps, um, for the board approve the per capita distribu- distribution or a distribution that the board thinks appropriate. Um, and then we also have a new position to talk about tonight. Um, and, and Leslie is, uh, will explain that part. And then the third step is that I will provide you another update on August the third. August the 3rd update hopefully is much more informative than tonight. For starters, you've already approved a $2.5 million plan. However, now we have approximately 3.9 million. So we're going to need a new plan, and we're going to need to revise our initial plan. And there have been, there has been additional guidance in how the money can be spent. And I'll just, you know, previously, there, well, it's went back and forth. But the question, well, before I get to the payroll part of the appropriation, I can say there has been interest from municipalities and county departments on using architectural services to reduce the transmission of COVID-19. Pete Bogel, you know, has already, you know, the contract was approved or not. They are working hard to get us to the steps that we need to be to have the money expended by December 30th. But there's also, in addition to the coronavirus relief fund, there's also FEMA reimbursement. So we're going to try to maximize the dollars from the coronavirus relief fund money and the FEMA money. But one thing that was clearly stated in the last meeting with NC Pro related to funding salaries. Now, how that was explained to the board, or how we understood that, has changed at different times. But before this recent, most recent guidance came out, it was our understanding that the money could only be spent on employees' salaries for those employees who had duties directly related to COVID-19. And it had to be very specific. Now, that wasn't the initial guidance. That's just the most recent before the most recent guidance came out. And that guidance, we learned about last week. And I'll just read it in part, some of it to you. And it says, "The fund is designed to provide ready funding to address unforeseen financial needs and risks created by COVID-19 public health emergency. For this reason, as a matter of administrative convenience, in the light of the emergency nature of this program, a state, territorial, local, or tribal government may presume that payroll costs for public health and public safety employees are payment for services substantially dedicated to mitigating or responding to the COVID-19 public health emergency, unless the chief executive or equivalent of the relevant government determines that the specific circumstances indicate otherwise." So the interpretation of that guidance on a call that was set up last week was that a paramedic or a public health nurse, all their salary from March to December could be paid for with the coronavirus relief fund money. That is much different than when we presented. I'm not going to say the guidance changed. My understanding of the guidance is much different than the plan you approved that had, you know, different things. Because, case in point, some of some of the personal protective equipment, we believe, may be eligible to be refunded through FEMA dollars. And if that's the case, and we can get salary reimbursement with these money, with the coronavirus monies, that would maximize the county's appropriation. Now, I know that probably sounds confusing, and I'm confused telling you about it. Because it has changed and changed, and it is fast. The money was sent, you know, from the feds to the state, to the local governments, to get it into the local government's hands very fast. And that has happened. The money is here, or the first part of the money. But we are tasked with trying to determine the most appropriate and beneficial way to spend that for the county. With, that is a segue into the second part of this presentation, which is, we're going to ask the board to create a position. And I don't know that I've ever, have ever asked the board to create a position that is part-time. Leslie, are you unmuted?
Yes, sir.
A position that may be part-time, full-time, temporary? I mean, we're going to ask you to approve all, you know, all different scenarios because we don't know what we'll be able to recruit for this position. But we do know that we do need somebody with a strong accounting background to help the county in the expenditures of the $3.9 million, as well as helping the municipality. So Leslie, I'll turn it over to you for that portion.
Great, thank you. Currently on staff, four of us have been working with the coronavirus funding sources as they have come up. We do have help in the Health Department with Charles Drake. We also have help at Emergency Services with TJ Brown. But the Assistant Finance Director, Jim Halden, the Internal Auditor, Derek Atkins, and the accountant too, in the Finance Department, Lisa Beavis and myself. We've had regular meetings about the grants. And just so you know, the coronavirus relief funds, and the acronym is CRF. That's what Aaron has been talking about, and that's that, this 5.3 million in funding. That's one of 10 grants that we currently have that we are eligible for, and we feel that we have been approved for. There are another six that we're looking and applying for. And so all of us have been, you know, chasing funding sources. And the thing about these sources is they have different expenditures are eligible. The period in which you can spend money, and it's still an eligible expenditure, that's different for each of the different sources of funding. And it's become, you know, we're handling it. But what's happening is we're now starting to get behind in other areas. And Lisa Beavis is in my department. She is my grants administrator. She and I are the two that typically handle grants. And we can do so, but not when you're looking at the... It makes it challenging when you're looking at the level of funding currently that we're eligible for, and that we need to be very diligent in tracking expenditures. So that's why we're asking for a position. And as Aaron said, I would expect the position to be in place anywhere from six to 24 months. It would be a temporary position. And once the, you know, the coronavirus relief funds have been expended, and there are no more reporting requirements for it, or some of these other grants, which, one of the grants goes out to June 30th, 2022. So we'd be looking at what this person could take on. And the rest, my staff would continue to monitor and do the reporting for. But so we're looking at six months to 24 months. We're looking for somebody, if we can hire somebody, you know, that's available, and they won't full-time work, we would be looking for that. If they won't part-time work, but they are a good fit for the county, we would be looking at that. And we would also look at someone to pay on a contract basis. We've reached out to Potter and Company, who we used in the past as auditors, and also Martin Starnes. And Martin Starnes has seen if they have anyone available. Potter and Company does not. We've also reached out to some other areas just to see if there's interest. And it's tough right now because we're into the governmental auditing season. So most employees who still work for public accounting are tied up. And it's more difficult for them during this time with their limited access to the governments because it's just taking them longer. And that's how it is for a lot of things that people are doing with the teleworking. Sometimes to get everything coordinated, it's just taking more time. That's what we're asking for there, that we're asking for approval from the board. And another thing that I would like to mention is because now the municipalities will, after tonight, they'll know how much funding they can expect to receive. And as Aaron said, it no longer appears that we might have to approve their funding string, but their expenditures are still supposed to come to the county because you have to report every month. And that is supposed to flow to the county and through the county's portal. So we're asking that you allow Derek Atkins, the internal auditor, if the municipalities would like him to do this, to be able to meet with them through Zoom meetings, or if they have the space for social distancing, to go to them. Because some of the municipalities, I think, you know, it's, their staffs are smaller. And Derek and Lisa, all of us have been in the meetings, listening to everything. But we thought it might be helpful for the municipalities for him to go and show them the report that they have to initially file and to talk through the eligible expenditures. Because we've been on this sort of from day one. And I think that he could help alleviate some of their concerns.
Yeah, and the municipalities, they weren't really involved at all up until last week. I think maybe in the first time they had an opportunity to participate in conference calls with NC Pro. So we established a meeting last week with each municipality. And we're going to continue that on a weekly basis just to discuss any additional guidance that we receive and to provide assistance to each municipality. Because they've got, you know, they've got a really quick turnaround as well. And if they don't have a plan completed, they don't receive any funding. Now, it's unclear at this point in time, to me anyway, what happens to that funding? Does that come back to the county to spend countywide? Or can that be distributed per capita to the municipalities that turned in a plan? I don't know the answer to that question. But...
Aaron, can I ask a question, please? This new position that you're talking about putting on, is this going to be paid out of the money coming in from the federal government?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so this is not going to be coming out of our fine balance or anything else? And so do we know how long this money is going to be available? But what, the reason I'm asking is she's telling us that this report's going to be due out to June of 2022. Should we not set up a salary number so that we can go ahead and budget money that far out, out of this fund? So that we don't end up having to come out of county money?
Well, okay, for the, Leslie made a really good point that I failed to mention in the beginning. What I am focusing on tonight in this presentation is the coronavirus relief fund. That is one of eight or nine grants we're getting. So the, and each grant has different timeframes. For this position to be paid for with the coronavirus relief fund, it can only be spent through December 30th. At that point in time, if the position is still here, and there is not, and we can't use any of the other grants for it, then it could potentially be county money that you would spend for, you know, the maintenance of the audits, et cetera, in the background. So, I mean, that's a good question. You know, will we be able to get FEMA reimbursement for it? Will we be able to get reimbursement from other grants? I don't, I don't know. But, but there are more than one grants, and they're all different. And I believe, Leslie, another one that just came through was a half a million?
Yes, we're receiving another grant for the Health Department that's $558,000. So we have looked at the other grants, and we don't have a, maybe a final decision yet. But it does appear that two of the other funding sources would pay for this position.
Don't you think it would be prudent then, at this point in time, that the board just approved the new position through December 30th of 2020? This way, we know we've got money to pay that. And then if other monies come in from these other grants, we can extend it.
That's fine.
Yes, so that...
Can you hire somebody, though, for four months? Or are you planning on using somebody out of your office?
No, we need somebody, we need an additional person. Now, to answer your question, can we? I don't know. We may not be able to find someone with the knowledge, skills, and ability that we need for this particular position. We have several excellent internal staff that can do it. But if the internal auditor is moved to focus so well on this, then the internal auditor is not doing the internal auditing. So, and this is really time-sensitive because, I mean, we've got to December 30th to spend the 3.9, approximately 3.9 million, and to spend appropriately, and to make sure that we can maximize the benefit for the county with these funds.
If all the monies have to be spent by December 30th, why would you need two years after that to the county?
Okay, only the money from the coronavirus relief fund has to be spent by December 30th, 2020. There are about eight or nine additional grants. Yeah, aside from the, I keep saying 3.9 because that's the county share, but the 5.3 million from the coronavirus relief fund is just one grant. There's about eight or nine additional grants related to the coronavirus that are not called the coronavirus relief fund.
Correct. And the longest time period that we have seen, expenditures can go through June 30th, 2022.
Or I may have misspoke. It may come from the coronavirus relief fund federally, but it's not being distributed in the manner of the municipal and local government portion.
Aaron, this is Mike. What, I mean, if you were to have someone hired for, I don't know, a year, I mean, what kind of salary would that be? Someone hired for, I don't know, a year, I mean, I mean, what kind of salary would that be? Sixty, seventy thousand dollars type salary?
Yeah, the um the salary for um. An accountant to um goes to. I think about ninety-seven thousand, it's from like sixty-seven thousand to ninety-seven thousand and um. That's somewhere in the ball, in the range we're looking at. I mean, we would pay them commiserate with their education and their experience. Particularly grant experience and we we would be looking for um a CPA if they're available. Because this is actually um. Equivalent to auditing expenditures to make sure that every expenditure that we submit for reimbursement is eligible. And my staff is capable of doing it, it's just that we we are now, right now operating in two fiscal years. Uh prior fiscal year where a lot of the transactions that come in in July through mid-August. Uh relate to the prior fiscal year, we're operating in the new fiscal year. Where we start almost immediately preparing for the audit, which will be in October. And then we're working on the um CAFER, the annual financial report. So um it's just Derek Clay and Lisa both play a large role in the audit. And in the preparation of the CAFER, as does Jim Howden and myself. Um uh we'll make it work if we don't find anybody, but some things. Some normal reconciliations that get done. It will be challenging to figure out. You know, what might not get done and um and or or how to shift duties.
So even if it's, let's just round it up and say a hundred thousand dollars. Half of that can be paid out of this money because it goes through the end of the year. So if we didn't have any other grants at all. Then we would just have to have fifty thousand, I'm just using a number, for the rest of the six months for the second half of the year.
Yes, sir, and and what I'm proposing is that um. We we've done this in the past where we'll have a a grant that is specifically for positions. And when the person is hired, they know if the grant funding ceases, they no longer have a position. And that's what I would be suggesting, that if there aren't, there isn't a funding stream to pay their salary. Then they no longer have a job.
If they, if there wasn't another grant string to pay it, they don't need it, that we don't need them anyway. Because that they're going to be hired to keep up with the grant funding and the accountability. So if the grant doesn't come through, we don't need that position to start with after December thirtieth.
That's true, the um we we currently have in including these um CRF funds. We have nine other grants that we are eligible for and have been awarded. We are in the running for six others. So so one of our reporting periods will go out to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. But but as grants drop off, my my guys will still handle some of those grants anyway. I mean, Lisa um has told me that she can, you know, she can definitely take on a few of these with her. The duties that she currently has, she'll just work longer hours. Um. You know, we'll we'll figure out a way, but as. As the grants drop off, um we, you know. We would be picking up, staff will be able to pick up. The grants themselves and the position would no longer be needed.
Chairman, are we ready for a motion?
Um, well, I want to make sure we understand there's quite a few things that we're being asked to do here. So I I want to go back a couple of slides. To the breakdown, to the model, to the model that you have, yeah, right there. Do some moving on my screen here. Um Aaron, have you have you talked to any other. County managers where there's maybe a a different. Mo- model than than what we see here, I mean. You know, Faith Faith has got their own. Town facilities and Cleveland's got their own town facilities, East Spencer has their own facilities. Good heaven, Salisbury is getting seven hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. And East Spencer is getting thirty-one, Cleveland eighteen, Faith seventeen. Is there any other way we could? Split this up?
Yeah, the board, the board, I think you have the authority to um. You know, distribute in 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 any manner that that you would like. I mean, you could take, you know, you could take. You know, there's ten municipalities um and you could divide thirteen. Uh one point three million by ten. Uh and and each person, I mean, not each person, each municipality uh would receive, what would that be, a hundred and thirty thousand apiece? Yeah, a hundred and thirty thousand apiece, you could do it that way. So you can do, you can, the the board can do it in any way you would like to do it. The only manager that that I I heard in a um. Conference call last week that was doing it differently. Uh or 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 wasn't using a mathematic formula that spoke up. Uh said that they were doing it just like a budget, they were asking uh municipalities to submit requests for what they would like. However, after listening to the call, uh well, I guess I guess they can do it that way. Uh because it's, you know, I I guess they were doing it kind of like, you know, the the municipalities would submit their requests to the county manager. To the board and then the board would look at all the requests and say, well, we're going to fund this, we're going to fund that. You know, we're going to fund this, but I don't think you're required to approve. How the money is going to be spent because because you're being required to give the municipalities twenty-five percent. So they are responsible for the twenty-five percent and whatever distribution they receive that twenty-five percent. But that's that's the only uh Randy, I think you were on the call, did you hear any other distribution method?
I I did not, that was the the same one where they considered all municipalities like departments. Um and they were submitting a budget so that what you had mentioned was exactly correct.
And the thing with that method is what this this legislation was passed. What, two weeks ago, the revised?
Yes, on the twenty-fifth of June.
Yeah, so they, well, I don't I don't know how they were doing it. I don't I don't know how they, I mean, you know, at this point in time. The municipalities have to have a plan to submit to the county and then we submit it. To the state, you know, before September first, so if we went through um. That exercise, um you know, it 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 might be. Uh to get all that done by September first.
All right, well, I was just curious if you heard any other models. Because we've got a couple municipalities that uh. That have huge amounts and we've got uh three or four. That um I'm not sure would cover the expenses that they would need to um. To to do outfits at some of their facilities.
So Greg?
Yeah. It's Mike, um you know, we could set a, we could set a base number that each one would get. And then the rest of it could be distributed by population.
I now that I was exactly thinking about that, maybe if whatever that could be, a fifty thousand dollar minimum.
I think that's a good idea.
And then um the the, so that'd be five hundred thousand. And then we take the remaining uh eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four. And then divide that out based on um population.
Yeah, there needs to be some type of minimum out there because seventeen thousand dollars for a town like Faith isn't going to go anywhere. And same way with Cleveland, eighteen thousand dollars ain't going to get you started.
Sir, yeah.
So so I agree with Mike, be some type of minimum base and then work your percentages off of that based on population.
So could we do that? Could we could we make it a fifty thousand dollar minimum? And then with the remaining balance, which as I read this, would be eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand plus change. Then we divide that eight twenty-nine out by um. By population.
Where is the the eight, where are you getting the eight twenty-nine?
Well, you you've got the municipal share, the total is is one million, three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars, right?
Yes.
So if we do a minimum of fifty thousand for all ten municipalities, that's five hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
But the balance would be eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars, which would then be divided by. Uh the uh in that case Salisbury gets fifty-four point two one percent of that. Fifteen point five eight for Kannapolis and on down.
Yeah, I can, if 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 you want to give me about two minutes, I can do that on the spreadsheet real quick and tell you what the numbers would be.
Okay, so that's um.
All of that's going to be based upon them uh sending back in an acceptable plan.
That's that's correct.
And and I was thinking of the same thing, I I think a a base amount. Uh would be good because then they would have a set amount that they could go in and could do work to City Hall. Or do work to uh water systems or whatever they have to, you know, whatever they might come up with. Uh with that. But it it still has to be an acceptable plan to state and federal government, I assume.
Well, it's by understanding that we're the ones that's going to set that plan of how we want to distribute these funds to the municipalities. But I think that's the most equitable way to do this because. Um you know, like I say, some of these numbers here, it it wouldn't even pay them to fill out the paperwork because they couldn't get anything done, even if they got all the money.
Okay, I'm gonna, I can read off to you. What I'm going to do is email this to Leslie just to double check. And then I'll read off to you what the appro- the appropriation would be based on the method you just identified.
Yeah, I also uh calculated, so.
Oh, okay, well, do you have for uh for Salisbury, four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars?
I do.
Okay, and for Kannapolis, a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars?
Yes.
China Grove, a hundred and five, eight twenty-nine?
Yes.
Spencer, ninety-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-six?
Yes.
Landis, ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty?
I've got ninety-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-one.
Okay, yeah, rounded up. Granite Corey, uh ninety thousand, six hundred and forty-one?
Yes.
Rockwell, seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and eighteen?
Yes.
East Spencer, sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-five?
Yes.
Cleveland, sixty-one thousand, six hundred and nineteen?
Yes.
Faith, sixty thousand, eight hundred and eleven?
Yes.
Does that sound good to the board?
All right, let me let me just make sure here that we're uh that I'm thinking correctly. I know you folks already understand it all. This is twenty-five percent that we are not personally responsible for.
As I understand it today, that's the rule.
And how about getting our attorney to weigh in on this thing?
Well, the the.
It it might hurt my retirement just a bit if I have to pay back this money.
Well, the what 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 the NCACC argued. Based on the conversation I heard to the North Carolina Pro Office is. Hey, you're telling the counties they have to give twenty-five percent to the municipalities, they have no choice. Um so based on that, that twenty-five percent, the county is not. Like, they're not supposed to be liable for how that money is spent for the municipalities because the county has no choice. Whether or not we give them the twenty-five percent. Further, and I know Commissioner Pierce said, we have to approve what we give them. At one time, yes, but based on this new twenty-five percent rule. Um I don't, I don't believe we have to approve it. I believe you set a dollar amount and say you're eligible for this month much. They submit a plan, we just take that, I mean, we'll be glad to look at it. As a as a courtesy if they would like for us to 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 tell them if we think the state will approve it. But then we just send it to the state and then the state will communicate back to us and we'll communicate with them. But now we can ask specifically that they provide that in writing, but that is, that is what we were told. Um in a meeting that was, um you know, the meeting was, uh it was like a YouTube. Live and I think it was recorded and you can go watch it, et cetera. So for that twenty-five percent of the five point three million. If it goes to the municipality, I don't believe the county is responsible or liable for how that appropriations is spent. And both Leslie and Randy were on the call and if if. If you if you heard anything different.
Aaron, the um. The latest information that I've seen is that although the county is not responsible for the expenditures. Um the municipalities are to submit the plan to the county. Because everything is flowing through the county portal.
Right. So then the question, the question becomes, does the county have to approve what they submit? Or do we just simply take the plan and put it in the portal and submit it to the state?
Aaron, I think the intent there with what Leslie was saying is yes, that we're just doing that because NC Pro is was. Designed to work with the counties and since they're doing the municipals as a sub-recipient, they're just put that burden on the county. To process and do the uploads uh on behalf of those municipalities that we're we're representing. Um so that was, that at least sounded like the intent that came across from the NC Pro Office.
So now, do we need a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Do, would would y'all like to see what what the distribution looks like on on um the screen? Before you vote on it?
I'm good with it with the numbers you read out, but I'm just one commissioner.
With the way we're going to distribute it, I think that that's a fair way to everybody. So whatever the numbers are, is what the numbers are.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
So I guess, I guess on that motion in the. Shall be distributed as read aloud by the county manager.
All right, I'm sorry, guys, I've I've been having technical issues. Um so. I had to flip back over to the phone and so now I'm back again. Um I I got part of, yeah, do you do you have that screen um, Aaron, that you could share with us?
Yes, I will, I will send it to Randy, a screenshot. Now, I can't, I I don't, let's see, hold on. Okay, Randy, do you want me to, to email it to you?
Yes, email would be preferred, thank you.
Yeah, and I apologize, this isn't, you know, it's not very presentable, but it's just a screenshot of an Excel spreadsheet with, with some of the, uh,
Let me ask if that's legible first.
Yeah.
It is.
Thank you.
It looks about as fair as I think we can make it.
What do y'all think?
I think it's good.
Fine.
Okay with that, Judy?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and I apologize for, you know, for bringing this to the board, you know, on, on the spot to have, you know, to make a decision. But it's, you know, time.
Well, you don't have the time to do it any different.
Well, we're the one that sprang it on you, so thanks for, uh, being as thorough as you were. So, all right, so the first thing we'll need to do is we'll need to make a motion uh, to approve the funding based on that last, um, spreadsheet.
So moved.
Okay, Craig? All right, um, Mike, second. All right, any other discussion? All right, then all in favor say aye. And then there's a second, um, item to, uh, create a temporary grants management accountant funded by CRF. Uh, Aaron and Leslie, maybe give us some guidance on how you want that worded.
I think that wording was fine. Okay.
Leslie, do you have the actual title that, that?
Um, it's a, it's a temporary COVID grants administrator.
All right, so that, who made the motion?
I made the motion.
All right, Craig made a motion for that position. Ms. Judy, second. Any other discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
It has, it needs to be assigned a, uh, grade.
All right.
All right.
How are we gonna know the grade if that's based upon experience and other things?
Probably look at the position accounted to, if that's.
That's, that's fine. Let me, I will find that real quickly.
Are they gone? They will be an employee of ours, but will they be bonded like, uh, uh, you folks are?
Accountant two is a grade twenty-two and that the minimum is fifty-seven thousand, six ninety-five, maximum is ninety-two thousand, three hundred and thirteen.
Okay, that sounds good.
Is that okay, Leslie?
Yes, sir. That's fine. And to answer Jim's question, Jim, the finance director is, has a separate bond, but all county employees are under a blanket bond. So they, they would be covered.
Off the top of your head, what that is, what, what that amount is?
I don't, I don't know off the top of my head.
Sounds like Jim's a little worried about his retirement.
Yeah, he is. Well, no, we're, we're working with some big dollar figures here and I know we're not bonded for two or mi, two or three million dollars. And, um, I just, I, I think we need somebody that qualifies for a bond, first of all, to make sure that they, that they are gonna be bonded and that, um, you know, if, if they're, of course, they're gonna be sending stuff to us for approval, but still, when you get large amounts of money, it takes, you know, anything can happen.
They would be working under the direction of the finance director. So they would be under the finance director's bond, which is a two hundred thousand dollar bond.
All right.
Um, we, we can explore and bring back to the board what, uh, once we have someone in mind, um, a separate bond for them. I mean, that can also be done.
I tell you what, just for, for being cautious, you can bring it before us and that doesn't mean we have to spend the money, but, uh, let's just see what it would cost.
Yes, sir. I'll do that.
All right, so we have a motion to appoint, um, temporary grants manager accountant funded by the CRF at grade twenty-two. Is that right, Aaron?
Yes, sir.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. All right, moving on. So we have, on August sixth, uh, county will be entitled to one vote on items to come before the membership of the NCACC, that's the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, one hundred and thirteenth Annual Conference Business Session. It'll be held by virtual, uh, probably by Zoom on Thursday, August sixth. Does anyone, um, dying to do that?
I'll volunteer.
Who, uh, Craig, is that you?
I'll volunteer, I got time.
Okay, well, thank you. Um, so I'll, I'll nominate Craig. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, excellent. Uh, Jim, do you want him bonded too?
Uh, uh, yeah, that'd be a good thing.
Okay, all right, all in, all in favor, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Craig, thank you for volunteering.
No problem.
All right, uh, we got some board appointments. So Airport Advisory Board, uh, there's a vacancy for a member of the business community and the second vacant seat is for a pilot. I don't know if you read through these, um, we've got, got a, a lot of good um, applications here. I'll just tell you who I really focused on and then if you guys, um, you know, Craig and I know some folks out at the airport. Um, the first one you had in your packet was Kurt Beatty. I've known Kirk a long time. Uh, he's a local business owner. He's an IT, uh, consultant and programmer, but he's also a pilot. Um, he's a current, um, uh, he, he has a hangar out at the airport and a couple airplanes. So, um, so, you know, I, I'd like to see Kirk on there. I, I've talked to him for a couple of years about at some point if we had an opening there, I'd like to see him on there.
Mr. Chairman, we're gonna nominate him for the pilot position or the business position, just?
Well, um, that, that's what I'm not sure about because it, um, the next one on there is Mark Comer and if you all read through the, these resumes, Mark has a, uh, an extensive background with the FAA. He's a, um, I, I think an air traffic controller and has worked in a lot of international airports. He lives here. Um, he lives in Kannapolis, but he's, uh, he's in our area, but he has a, man, just a, a pretty oppressive, impressive, uh, Federal Aviation Administration background that I think would help. Um, I don't know, I don't know that he's a pilot, um, but he's, um, you know, we, we could nominate him from the business community and then Kirk as a pilot or we could.
I, I'd like to see us nominate.
Say that again?
I said, I'd like to see us nominate those two gentlemen in that order, that, uh, Mr. Comer be the business, uh, participant and then Mr. Beatty be the pilot representative.
I'll second that.
All right, thank, thank you too. Um, any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you then. Uh, Board of Social Services, Commissioner Klusman would like to be reappointed for a three-year term that will expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Now, um, so would that encompass just going ahead and extending your commission term to twenty twenty-three?
No.
That's, that's a joke, yeah. All right, so, um, it, so.
I'll nominate Klusman for as long as she's in office, how about that?
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know if we can do that. Um, but for this term, Craig, will you, uh, will you nominate her for this, uh, this, this term?
Yes.
All right, and a second? All right, all, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, East Gold Hill Volunteer Fire Department, uh, commissioners, there are two vacancies. Thomas Ray Choate and Ralph Eugene Earnhardt have applied, so do we have a motion and a second to approve those two?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Town of Granite Corey Planning Board, uh, Granite, uh, Granite Corey Board of Alderman voted to support the reappointment of Ron Jacobs as an ETJ member of the Granite Corey Planning Board. So a motion and a second to, uh, approve Ron Jacobs?
Move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and our friend Peggy Price applied for reappointment to, as an at-large member, uh, to the Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee. Uh, so a, a motion, let's see, a motion to approve her in a second? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, the rules of organization for this committee, the, uh, Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee state that funded providers shall serve while being funded. The new funding cycle started July first, twenty twenty, and the following providers need to be reappointed for a one-year term and that'll expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Ms. Donna Faco, Department of Social Services Director Valerie Steele from Ryan Transit Services, Nan Bu, Brewer, uh, Ruffey Home Senior Center and Cindy Fink Meals on Wheels. We have a motion and a second to approve those four?
Still moved.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, JCPC, Don Brendel applied for reappointment. Uh, Don has served, um, more terms than he cares to admit to. Um, but we, we would like, we would like to consider him as an invaluable member to the board to consider waiving the term limit again and giving him an additional two-year term beginning July first, twenty twenty. So do we have a motion to, motion to extend his term?
So moved.
Our, our motion to waive, uh, our requirement. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then do we have a motion to approve Don to that position? All right, uh, Craig and Judy and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, Andrew Deal applied to fill the remaining term for the vacant chief of police seat. Uh, if appointed, his term would expire in July thirtieth, twenty twenty-one and at that point he'd be able, he'd be eligible for two full terms. Um, so, and then, uh, Aunt, uh, Alyssa Russell applied for reappointment as a member of the general public. So for those two, we have a motion in a second?
Still moved.
All right, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then Lock Volunteer Fire Department Fire Commissioner Bill Hammerick applied for a two-year term and that'll expire July thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Motion and a second, please.
Motion for Bill.
All right, all right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Uh, let's see, we've got a litter report. This is from, uh, Aaron through our, our folks out at the, uh, at the dump. Uh, Rowan County staff removed nine thousand, eight hundred and forty pounds of roadside debris and litter during the two-week period beginning Monday, June first through Friday, June twelfth. Um, so nine thousand, eight hundred, almost five tons. Uh, so thank you all those who continue to make a difference by fostering environmental stewardship throughout the county. Throw your garbage away and, uh, recycle that stuff and, uh, we'd appreciate it very much. Uh, let's see, so I need to read a, move into closed session. I moved that the board now.
We've got A and eight B to do.
Oh, man, yep, sure did. My bad.
No problem.
So A, A is, uh, let me get on my papers here. A, A had to do with our, um, Aaron, that was, uh, for our north, why don't you just go ahead and, and take it from there? I can't find what I printed out.
Yes, sir.
That, that had to do with the North Waterline.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is asking the board to award or to select, um, Hazen, uh, and, and, and Sawyer, uh, as the county engineer to provide professional on-call services and to design a chemical boost, booster pump station, uh, in part, um, the tech, one of the technical leads for Hazen Sawyer that will be on this project um, is a subject matter, matter expert in lead and copper. Uh, and he recently, uh, published an article in the, uh, American Water Works Association journal, uh, titled Updating Lead and Copper Sample Site Selection, Best Practices From An Innovative Pilot Program. Mr. Arnold, uh, that's, that's one of the main reasons.
Okay. All right, so, uh, any questions for Aaron? You guys know what's going on with this. Um, but we would need a motion to, um, to approve that organization for an on-call professional services and chemical booster pump station. All right, any questions on that to Aaron? All right, uh, Craig, did I see you or hear you say motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do we, do we have a second? All right, thank you. Um, any further discussion? If none, then all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. Uh, eight B was simply, um, had to do with, let me get back, man. Yeah, I got so many papers here. Let me get back to my, this was, um, an RFQ for services for broadband expansion. I think this is, this was important just to talk about for a second as our governor and our school system continues to struggle over whether we're going back to school in the fall. One of the issues, uh, that is, I'm sure, heavy on the minds of a lot of our elected leaders, um, is when you leave these kids at home, some kids, uh, have a lot of technology and some don't. And so we know, we keep talking about broadband, uh, in unserved, uh, rural parts of Rowan County. Uh, and so this is what we're talking about again. So we, we have been waiting for the state, uh, to get to us. Uh, we are a tier-two county and they're still working with tier-one counties. We thought that by July one, they were supposed to move on to tier-two counties. That's not happened. Um, so we have decided. So we have decided in the, in the face of the uncertainty of COVID and the uncertainty of whether we'll be able to, that our kids will be able to go back to school or not, we, we really have got to push hard and push forward on, on, on rural broadband. And so we're asking that the commissioners approve that an RFQ be created for services for broadband, broadband expansion. Initially, we were looking at the Scots Irish. That was the most underserved area. But there will be others, I think, that we're going to go ahead and move toward. And, and so there's been some developments on that. So I just wanted to make sure that that's out there. We know what's going on. We're, we're not waiting on the state anymore, and we need to push this hard. So do we have a motion to approve that Aaron and Leslie drop an RFQ for services for broadband expansion?
Before we get a motion, did I read correctly the information that this would be reimbursable if we spent the money for the RFQ?
That, that is, that, that's a great question because it's something that we've been asking for some months, or at least as long as this COVID relief money came down to us, could we use this money for COVID? Could we use this COVID money for this? Our argument being that our children are at home, not just kids, but we have businesses at home. We have homebound workers that, where offices are closed and folks are sheltering in place that are still working from home are in locations where they don't have, have good internet service. And so we have argued that this is part of the COVID response. And Randy, are you there? Or would you like to say anything about this? I know Randy has been working hard on getting an answer for that, and perhaps you can give us, shed some light on that.
Yes, so initially, there is the 50,000 that was budgeted in this fiscal year. So the RFQ includes that as the initial that would have a matching portion. Given the CRF funding that we've received, I did work with both NC Pro and the State Broadband Infrastructure Office to get an assessment on the use of that. The state has actually been awarded $9 million to the broadband infrastructure office that has gone to, through NC Pro, through the CARES Act, to that, for the tier-one grants. So given that our grant opportunity hasn't come up for tier-two, I'd argued, or basically just proposed that, you know, can we use the funds in the same manner because our needs in the county are just as shovel-ready? We've identified our locations, and that does match the NC Pro State Brand Broadband Office and the U.S. Treasury guidance. So yes, there's an additional with meeting of a specific milestone of having service available by that November 1st timeframe. There will be additional 200,000 that would not be using county funds, just CRF funds. And that's again to look at anyone that would want to respond, that can help meet that milestone. And again, not just in one area, but both of our unserved and underserved areas that have been identified over this past year and a half.
The, the one caveat, Craig, is the 50,000 that we approved in our budget won't change because we can't use any of these dollars to supplant existing dollars. So we'll
I'm, I'm okay with that. I just wanted to make sure the information I saw was correct. And, you know, I'm, I'm in full support of it. I just wanted to make sure that what we were doing.
Yeah, and thanks to Randy, and he's, he's had some good ideas. So we're, we're expanding that 50,000 out quite a bit as a, as an enticement to the private sector to put some dollars out there to do some significant funding for that, as long as they'll get this you know, shovels in the ground by, I don't know, what did you say, Randy? Sometime in November, but December 30th? Is that it?
November 1st. Now, of course, if, if we hear of any extensions from the NC Pro office, we'll be sure to relay those. But as the RFQ is written, it will be for the November 1st.
Okay. All right, so do we have a, a motion to approve the RFQ?
So moved.
All right, in a second. All right, Craig, second. All in favor, say aye. Any, any opposed? All right, thanks. Thank you, Randy, for your good work on that. All right, Moshe, is there anything else? Can I go to closed session now? I move the board now into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 1433181185 to consider a potential lease at Mid-Carolina Regional Airport. So Randy, what are our instructions here? Are you, are we going to stay on this Zoom and you're just going to put it on pause?
Yes, please. Stay on your meetings. We're going to disconnect video from everyone, and also you're mute as well, and then April will check that.
And then Randy, well, to the, to the commissioners, you have a conference call number that you've been given. Is that right?
Yeah, we got a conference call with a pin number.
All right, well, we'll see you there in a minute, okay?
All right, I'm unmuted.
Chairman, you have everyone of
All right, so we don't have any action to speak of coming out of closed session. So do we have a motion to adjourn? All right, thank you. All in favor, say aye. All right, so we're adjourned, and y'all have a safe week and stay healthy.
You too.
All right, bye-bye.